Okay, all right. Good morning. Today is the Tuesday, October 15th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's eight thirty-one AM. Before you, you have today's agenda. I do have one modification to today's agenda. We need to remove item number five from today's agenda. They already have a PO in for that was approved at a prior message meeting and they don't need to. They haven't gone over that PO amount, so they don't need to to come back for that. Do I have a motion to approve that amendment? Second? It's unanimous? And could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Second, it's unanimous. Thank you. So if you have October first agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, minutes. Do you have any additions or corrections that you'd like to make to the minutes?
None here.
No, they're fine.
Okay, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes from our October meeting.
Same.
For first, it's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. Do I have anyone wishing to make public comment?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Item four, software renewal. Chief Di Frederico. Beef Federico.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
This is a annual renewal of our contract with Flock Safety. That's our fixed license plate reader cameras that we have throughout town. This is just the annual renewal which we have budgeted for in our capital budget.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the chief? Seeing none, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Police Department to renew a contract with Flock Safety in an amount of $28,000 for annual software and maintenance renewal for the fixed license plate readers.
Same.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, Chris Kaiser, IT.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're gonna be just as, just as easy. We told you we'd be coming back every time we bought new desktops, so we've, they've got fifty in stock. We were kind of a little, just a little backstory, a little leery with the, the port breakdown there. We weren't sure we were gonna land if we were gonna get these all in on time this year, so it looks like we'll be fine. It's all in the budget. We've got our bids or our quotes and Chi came up number one with pricing and licensing. So it'll be fifty new desktops, which will, will be coming back again for another fifty. And seven new switches, so it all coincides with all new networking.
How did it compare with what you budgeted? How did it compare with where you budgeted?
Actually, it was, it was a little under, which is great, yeah. Cisco switching, I'll give you a quick, they were, they started to get very expensive, so we started to move away from them for a little while. Every seven to eight years, we have to redo the switchgear. They do end of life software you can't get any more support for, so basically they go with the right electronic bucket. This company does so much in the Cisco gear that we were able to stay within it and they're about $400 apiece less than what we were, what we had budgeted for. And we're gonna need about thirty when we get done with all this. So each building has at least one.
So I just have a question. You mentioned the quote, so are these, is this the only provider that you spoke with on?
No, 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 we have all the quotes that go with them. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, I can get them to you, but they also.
Yeah, usually if you could like put that with our packet, because it's helpful to, for us to see sort of the various, if you could just maybe tell us and that'd be great.
The next closest one was, these are thirty-one, thirty-seven apiece for the switchgear. The next closest was thirty-five, eighty-nine, and then way out of the market, forty-seven, ninety-four.
Okay, all right, that's great. Thank you.
Chris, how do you do that? You roll through the oldest units first, or do you select a building at a time? How do you, how do you roll through this?
Actually, because we usually do them before or after hours, it'll be which building's not that busy to start. So the first seven we'll do Vine, we'll do Annex behind here. Town Hall we'll have to do on, say, because it's major, it's, it's a larger step stack. But that's how we typically do it, is just by whoever's the busiest being makes sense, yeah.
All good, thank you.
Now, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Information Technology Department to enter into a contract with SHI in the amount of $62,108.85 for the purchase of seven Cisco Catalysts 9200L network switches and fifty ten Zig zero clients. Second, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Tiger, neglected cemetery grant.
Morning.
Morning.
So I'm sitting in a little bit for Greg Riley this morning about the neglected cemetery grant that we had received. We had put in for a, excuse me, a $5,000 grant. We had received it. That was under a previous administration, so Kevin had signed that. The state likes to have the current selectmen sign it, so we're asking for in essence, a reauthorization, so a resolution as it's read. Basically hereby authorizes the First Selectman Deanna Carlson to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts and documents. We've already completed the work. Now we're in the process of submitting for reimbursement. And this is part of the, the package that needs to go, so it's, the state said this is what they like to do now, so he said, okay, we'll come back and have it reauthorized. I believe that you just have to read the, be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan and then go from there.
The first two, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
We've already, so we've already done the work. I think I recall, was it Rosati Lansky?
Won the bid, that's correct, and he did the work. He's been paid. Now we're looking for us to be paid, so it's a reimbursement back.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. So any other questions? If not, I could get a motion to approve a rela- resolution authorizing the First Selectman to execute the request for payment of the already approved neglected cemetery grant as follows. Be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan. One, that it is cognizant of the town's grant application to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management, Intergovernmental Policy and Planning Division, 2023 Neglected Cemetery Account Grant Program for grant funds to clear weeds and overgrown brush and perform minor repairs to known neglected cemeteries in New Canaan. And two, that it hereby authorizes First Selectman Deanna Carlson to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts and documents necessary to obtain such said grant should the town be selected for a grant award.
Same.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John. FCAC cross-country.
Good morning. So tomorrow is the FCAC cross-country race where there'll be sixteen local schools, well, fairly local schools, coming to run the cross, big cross-country race at Waviney. The FCAC likes to sell commemorative T-shirts for this event, and that's why we're here for approval, so that the FCAC can sell the T-shirts.
And I think this is great. I think we're probably one of the few communities that doesn't allow this by right, but the, the only question I had is, so the money from the sale of the T-shirts goes back to the FCAC, and what do they use those proceeds for?
Exactly sure. Jay wasn't clear exactly where the money would go, and he's the president of the FCAC right now. Because it goes into their coffers. There, there are some expenses they have. We don't routinely do it, but we could charge them for the setup of the course and things like that.
We could.
We could charge them for the little bit of paint we use for the lines, but, so.
Yeah, that'd be, I think, you know, a fair use of proceeds. I mean, because we don't do this as of right. My whole thing with selling in the parks, at least my own personal, I don't, I don't want to speak for either of the other selectmen, is that if we're going to sell merchandise in the parks, and I think it's a good way to help bolster our different athletic groups for their fundraising activities. I would like to see those proceeds put back into, you know, the community somehow with our kids or their sports or whatever, so that was my only because I don't, definitely don't want the parks to become like big merchandise selling places, so.
The only corollary I would say, I meant if they're selling them at cost, that's one thing, but if they got a profit in it, yep.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's good. All right, I'll check, you know, if we could check back in with Jay, that would be great.
Just called me about thirty seconds ago.
Okay, yeah, just, just because I just, you know, if we can either, if they're making a profit, it'd be nice to have some of that go to offset our expenses in running the, the.
Our expenses are really minimal.
Yeah.
You know, we do do a little bit of work, but.
Great, great, okay. Otherwise, you know, I'm happy to have it go to the FCAC. I just want to make sure.
It's a great event. I mean, it's, it's, we happen to have the perfect place for a cross-country event like this, and it's, it's just great that everybody can enjoy Waviney the way they do.
Yeah.
Time of year. I think it's gonna be another nice day, just like today is, so.
Yeah, I miss my cowbell. I was a, every year, I had a child who ran cross-country, so I was there every year. It was a great event, great event.
I would say it would make sense to do this not the day before, because obviously the T-shirts are printed. What if we were just cranky, you know?
We tried to do it two weeks ago, and Jay was gonna try to be here, but he's busy with a lot of different things right now, so that's why I'm here for him. And you're right, we would have liked, we should have done it a couple months ago, would have been easier.
Just in the future, put down the.
Well, this will be the first year that they're doing this, right? I haven't seen, or maybe it's been a few years since. They never did it when my child was in there, but.
Have been, they have been doing it, so we're going about it the right way.
Okay, good, okay, good.
Oh, my God, I have closets full of memorative T-shirts from finals. Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Recreation Department to sell commemorative T-shirts during the FCAC cross-country championship on October sixteenth on behalf, on behalf of the FCAC.
Same.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and Ryan, softball and baseball field upgrades.
You know, I drove by a baseball field yesterday and looked a little scruffy, I have to say, so this is probably well timed.
Okay, yes, slowing down. Some of the fields are not used right now, to our defense, I guess, but, um. So good morning. On behalf of the New Canaan Parks Department, I am here to request approval for our 2024 softball and baseball field upgrades. After a three-week bid process and four well-established companies reviewing the bid specs, only one company sent in a proposal. So with that being said, we would like to award Athletic Field Services the work. Their crew has done work for us in the past, and we have nothing but positive remarks to say about them. We also request to enter into contracts with DuraEdge products to purchase 138 tons of infield mix. DuraEdge is a leading vendor for infield mix, and we have selected the same mix for all of our fields that we've used in the past. So the total services for Athletic Field Services came out to $47,138.75. And I added a contingency of $4,713, making the total $51,851.75. In addition, the total price for 138 tons of DuraEdge recreational mix is $20,148. And I also added a 10% contingency for that of $2,014, making the total $22,162. So the money is available and budgeted, and the total for the whole project is $74,013.75, and that includes contingencies and deliveries.
And what did we budget for that?
Um, so each year it's $60,000, and then we have some leftover money from last year's project, which was roughly $14,000. So we have enough money and it's available and budgeted, and I included all the contingencies in that as well, so.
So the, the actual cost of this is seventy-four. You had budgeted sixty, so probably in next year's budget, might as well put in something closer.
We'll actually probably go down, because we're gonna have, you know, we're doing a little bit of extra work this year, but we're gonna have two less clay infills, which is where most of the work is done, is on the clay infills.
When do you do the work vis a vis when the kids play? So do you do, I mean, when, when, because we're, we're not doing winter baseball, right? We're doing, so do you do them so they're ready for the spring? Like, do you wait a little bit to do it?
Exactly, so our goal is April first to have them all done. With the winters being as they are now, the companies are able to work longer throughout the winter, put sod down, and there's no issues there. And then some of the fields, like I mentioned, are not being used right now, so they can start on those fields and then progress throughout.
And it's okay to like fix them now and not use them for a while.
Correct, yes. Snow cover is actually the best thing for them, but.
And this is an every-year expense on these fields? We have to spruce them up every year?
Correct, so this also pertains to, like, if we had sod work at soccer fields or something, this would go in that same budget.
Okay, thank you.
And this includes fixing all the mounds, the, you know, all that stuff.
Correct.
Batter's box. They get eaten up pretty well. I did see on a, on another note, I saw the geese vehicle yesterday going from Saks to the high school, so the program is in full swing, so.
They've also found Irwin.
Did I, did I call that? Did I call that?
Yeah, so they, they include Irwin in the scoop?
Dosh, it's another ten grand.
Oh, my God. Give him, give him somebody else's address and bury it in.
I know, maybe aren't there other, like, animals that, like, they're afraid of that we can put little statues of in?
With coyote statues? I'd have to find it, but I have pictures of them.
Yeah.
Eating right next to the coyote. You have to move it constantly.
I thought that was a real coyote once. I was so embarrassed when I went up there. I was like, wow.
Yeah.
I have a lot of owls hanging, owls. They don't work either.
Yeah, they keep the woodpeckers away, though. Um, I just, one question again. So I see there was a request for proposal. I'm not sure if you said this. Did you only get one response? Is that what you said?
I reached out to four companies, only one was able to.
Yeah, and they, they've worked in town before.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to enter into the following contracts related to related to performing field upgrades. Athletics Field Services, $47,138.75, plus a contingency of $4,713 for a total of $51,851.75. And DuraEdge Products Inks, $20,148, plus a contingency of $2,014 for a total of $22,162.
Same.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Joe. And Tiger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the Department of Public Works is requesting authorization to enter into an easement agreement with Eversource to bring electrical service to the new transformer. Eversource will prepare their standard agreement for final execution. So in simple language, Eversource owns the cabling from the pole to the transformer and the transformer itself. In order for Eversource to be able to come in, service repair, the electrical service or the transformer itself, they need legal access to the cabling and to the transformer. So the process is the town requests the easement. The town provides a survey of the easement area. The town attorney and Eversource will finalize the standard language. The Department of Public Works will file the easement survey, once it's been completed and agreed to. Then the First Selectman will countersign the easement. And then lastly, the Department of Public Works will file the easement. So because time is the essence to get the transformer installed, we're seeking authorization for First Selectmen to be able to execute the agreement once it has been finalized with Eversource and the town attorney. There's no cost for the actual easement. There might be some legal fees that are associated with it, obviously. And there's a utility cost in the, in the budget, so that's already, already fees that are contemplated.
Joe, did you say we have to deliver our survey? So is there a cost associated with the survey?
Yes, it's in the project already.
It's in the project.
It's in the project already. Turner will, will put the final survey in there.
Joe, where's that easement run? Off, off South Avenue, right?
Yeah, it basically goes from the, the electrical pole where the service comes in, which is to the driveway furthest down east. I'm sorry, down South Avenue, and then it runs over to where the existing transformer is, and then over to where the generator slash, and the new home for the transformer will be. So it basically gives them access through the front drive and access over the top of the conduit that feeds. The, there's a, the conduit's in the grounds, the pathway that they have to connect their, their feeders to our transformer, so everything in that.
Yeah, because the reason I asked, they're, they're laying the granite curbing right now in front of it. It looks like they're well into that, so hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, no, so the easement, we're allowed to build things over the top of it, like, we're not allowed to build structures over the top of it, but it's, it's, it's common. It's just the, the pathway. They should never really need access to it, but that's what they do. That's what Eversource requires now.
So there's an existing easement to the old trans?
No.
There isn't. They didn't have one for that?
They ever had one, and, and now they're legalizing it, so whether we went to the old transformer or the new transformer, we would still be in this.
Okay, so there's no easement to the old transformer, and we will, you said something about going to the old and then the new, but it's just to the new?
It, it goes, it's just to the new. The conduit is run where it goes over towards the, the old transformer and then straight across to the, to the new. So it doesn't touch the old transformer. I was just giving you that for.
Why, why does the old, did we just make a break-off line to go to the new one instead of laying a whole new conduit?
Exactly.
Okay.
There is new conduits in there, but they're, they're over to that location, and then they, they, they veer over. I can get.
Because we originally were gonna have the transformer near the building.
Right.
They're gonna have an easement because of the conduit to the, toward the old.
Toward the old, and then.
And now also to the new.
The new.
Okay, yeah, the reason I asked about the curbing and the paving, I mean, we all have PTSD with Eversource. Put something new down, immediately they want to rip it up again, so, I mean, that's.
Well, we put it in for them. We put it in the pathway, so, and we put in a spare for them, so there should be no need for them to use the easement for that pathway. But it's a requirement.
So if they rip it up, though, they have to put it back?
Yeah, but it's never quite as good as it was there.
Or sometimes we, we, they pay us and we put it in. That way it's, you know, usually for like downtown sidewalks, things that ain't sure. They pay us. We get a price from our contractor. Our contractor does it, and they reimburse us for the cost for, to your point.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Police Department Building Committee authorizing a utility easement with Eversource to bring electrical service to the new transformer for the New Canaan Police Department renovation project. Second, it's unanimous. Um, okay.
Looks great over there.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Waviney House project update, Tiger.
So this was asked to be placed on the agenda, so we'll give you a little bit of an update. We had, we had Hoffman come back in, give a discussion with the Board of Finance last week, and during that process, we had asked Hoffman to kind of consolidate their, their ideas, their priorities as far as both Waviney House and Lapham itself, since the original costs they were coming up with were quite large. We asked them to kind of focus on the areas where they felt, you know, prioritize the areas for us, help us kind of feel where we are. So they gave us prioritization for both Waviney House and for Lapham House, and then a range of costs associated with both. Our feeling is that what we'd like to do at present is to get Hoffman and the current architect to review the existing plans that we had, expand upon them, since the plans are very good, but what Hoffman was requesting or suggesting was a larger scope, in essence. So to do that, finalize those plans and put those back out to bid. In the, in the interim, we'll have to come back to the boards for either a special appropriation or something in the budget cycle. As a, as an additional appropriation, we have approximately $300,000 left in the original amount, 300, 350,000 left in the original allocation. It's not enough to do the work that's being prioritized by Hoffman at present, so the, the thought is to, again, either a special appropriation or through the budget process, finalize the, to get some additional monies, finalize the plans, and then look to, look to do something in the early spring, hire the contractor and look to do something in the early spring. One of the reasons for the delay is that trying to work through the winter on properties such as this or, or a situation like this where we're repointing and working with masonry, we'd have to tent the entire area, scaffold it, tent it, keep it heated, keep it warm, which is only gonna drive up the cost for the construction at the time, so we felt that it'd be more prudent to get everything that we wanted to accomplish as far as our plan set, get the proper contractor involved, get the proper monies, and then go forward at that time. I believe this, their presentation was on your tablet, right? So you have that, so. So it kind of gives you the priority one for, for Waviney was in the range of $450,000, and then for Lapham, I believe it was in the $300,000 range. Three hundred and fifty to four hundred, so all in, that's about eight hundred, nine hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we'd be looking at an additional monies for that, and then prioritize from there. Working on the areas of damage, primary damage at, at the house and at the Lapham Center, and then look to do, say, a multi-year phased approach. You know, unless the board decides you want to do it all in one unit, then we'll look to do it in one unit, but our feeling is to try to tackle the areas that we know we're having the major problems with, and then focus as we see, and then try to spot repair as we go, going forward. Say, good.
Yeah, I would just clarify that the, the phase one, the high range is the $450,000 for the east service wing and the kitchen and the bar, so that, that covers the kind of the, the known areas that are infiltrating the building at this moment. And then they, they call the priority three, but it's really their, their, it would probably be done in one of the first phases was, there's about $2 million on the main house for it to, to expand the scope and put through a wall flashing above every, every, basically every window head, so it expanded from the, from the work that was previously recommended.
Hey, Joe, do you think if you do phase one, priority one, and you guys are working on it, but you'll get a better sense of what the building needs by working in these certain sections, which might inform our?
Yeah, yeah, we would definitely get a better picture of the, of the range. We did probe the building already, so we do know what's behind the, above the window heads now. Having said that, that doesn't mean that, you know, there's seven or eight that are done differently, just because during, you know, in the early 1900s, they, they did things a little different.
Yep. The, the other thing in priority one, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have some leakage in the new bathrooms. Would that be addressed? Didn't, do we have some, you know, where the new bathrooms are, we had some.
To the priority one, I think we would put it in priority one, but it, their priority one is, is very clearly just the east wing. So we would, there would be a little, we'd have to go through the process with them and.
Yeah, it just seems to me, we just put on the money and that we should make sure that it stays dry.
Yeah, I think any active leaks we would, we would do in priority one.
Okay.
So they kind of broke it to the geographically, you know, for, with the, the east wing and then the main house.
Because you got a scaffold and everything, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's a good point. I mean, I mean, you want, after you finish priority one, you want, you want to go in with the objective, but you also want to do the expectations for everyone. After priority one is, is completed, this is what we expect, you know.
We're not done.
Well, A, we're not done, but, you know, we're, we've stopped all the major leakage that's causing these damages in, you know, the bathrooms and different places that we've all looked at, so.
Yeah.
Want to make sure that after priority one, we're not still looking at putting finger in a dam, fixing this, you know, all the water anyway, should.
Right, so the way Hoffman broke it down, they, like, again, they did it by the areas of the building, so priority one and priority three have what I would call phase one.
Okay.
You know, it's.
One and three as.
Yeah, one and parts of three at a minimum, which is depending on what you have tolerance for budget.
Three is a significantly higher priority dollar figure than priority one.
Yeah, because worst-case scenario, in both, we're looking at two and a half million dollars, 2.45 is the number, if you combine those two high-end numbers, so that's, that's the number that.
Yeah, we need to throw, put in the capital budget.
Right.
For, I mean, the, the idea is to, to not. I, I know we have limited funds in this budget, but we're not gonna save any money by putting it off, so if we could figure out how to fix the priority one in the current budget and then have fixing this building a priority on our capital budget going forward, because having been in the Board of Finance for years, you know, you get all these capital budgets, and then the last minute figuring out how to make the numbers work, and we've seen. how to make the numbers work. And we've seen waving to get shifted time and time and time again. And you understand it at the time, but I think it's great going before the Board of Finance and uh, gave him kind of a heads up. Cause you know, just bringing capital, major capital projects before us, before the craziness of the budget cycle, I think helps us be more rational in prioritizing.
No, this this is an initial, sorry, this is an initial um, order of magnitude cost of work. So there are priorities. We asked them to do that just so that we could kind of break it into pieces. We would, we wouldn't necessarily break it into the exact pieces they they did. So there'll be a little bit of change. We'll we'll need to come forward and give you the actual dollar amounts once we dig into it.
Because I feel like we're going priority three without addressing priority two. Conversation that we're having.
The priority two is um, the coping. So uh, private priority two and four are through wall flashings at all the copings. That's good for the building to, you know, last for the next fifty years. It may or may not be causing any of the water infiltration. Uh, it's mostly the heads at the windows that are are kind of in the smoking gun for water infiltration.
So so going forward, because you want to be able to do this in the spring. So you guys going to go back and figure like this is really how much money we have and then we'll all come together and figure out where the resources might be for it. Cause you're.
So first they have to meet with the
Yeah, I'm just trying to say.
Architect who did all the design work of the initial work we thought we needed to do and they have to kind of come together and figure that out. Where where on the plans? Cause what what we got from Hoffman is not a.
Yep, that's.
Yeah, so there's and there's a term you use.
Peer review Hoffman will do a peer review and then they'll they'll will basically improve the details. Um, some details based on the probes that we did now that we have better information. And then the second part is they expanded the scope um, where originally we were just kind of fixing the leaks and uh, Hoffman's approach. They're recommending that you you may may not have leaks there now, but you should do all the windows now. So they're expanding the scope. So we hopefully we can walk away for, you know, ten years before we any need any sort of maintenance.
All right. So just keep us informed and let's make sure we get this ready to go in the spring to.
Well, likely they'll be, you know, likely there'll be a contract extension for Hoffman. So we'll have to come back for that as far as the peer review. Cause right now their scope was just to give us these documents present. So yeah, so you'll be informed as as the process moves forward. And as we get closer to a final number as to what we'd be looking at for year one, we'll say for right now.
Right.
And then and then the rest of it will put into our budget for year two, three, excuse me, as as the priorities unfold.
I mean, I mean, this is never fun money to spend, right? It is doing infrastructure and and maintaining stuff, but if we don't do it, it's just going to cost us more.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. New Canaan Ice Rink. Are you presenting for Gene or is Gene here? No. Okay.
No, I was just gonna sit here in case there are any questions.
I guess Gene isn't online. Okay. All right. Well, then I guess I'll, I'm not sure I'm equipped to present this item, but I can. So we're at uh, the ice rink committee is asking for an approval to temporarily operate the rink in Wavine Park for the twenty twenty five winter season. Um, asking for approval to allow food trucks. And then um, both requests are contingent on the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval after we give our approval.
So the will the guidelines be the same as last year? I guess the rules that govern this whole thing. I mean.
Are you asking me? I I don't have Gene Goodman here. Do you have any?
I don't have any insight, sorry.
Because it ran, I mean, it ran well last year. I don't think we had a lot of complaints last year and, you know, it was a great thing for the community and it's sort of was the kind of getting it off the ground. And uh, I I'm assuming that the food trucks will allow people to stay longer and and have something to eat, but.
But like when are they there all the time or I mean, you know.
That's parking wreck, I think.
Yeah. But it's it's we're proving food trucks a lot these days. And I mean, they can be really additive, but you know, it's like, you know, what tone do we want to?
Yes.
You know, we're not necessarily in a restaurant and waiting. So.
Well, I think that I think the hours of operation and the crowd that they'll have will dictate how much they want to be there. Cause.
Well, if we want to say something about hours or when they can have food trucks, maybe we do that since nobody's here to present this.
I I I so would it have to go through park and recs exactly specifically? When they wanted, when they want to do the food trucks or is it? Is it like for certain events? Is it every weekend? What does?
I know. This was kind of.
Which I know. Yeah, when are they sending? I mean.
There was an emergency email last, late last week from Rita.
Yeah, I saw that.
Asking to get this on. But I really don't feel like we have the information to make a decision.
I know, just briefly speaking to Jean, he talked about, are we going to be able to set up November first?
Yeah.
Last year with the very wet fall, softball went along further. So we delayed him by two weeks. But they'll they'll be softball will be done by November first.
That's why the emergency email.
Maybe we can, um, if you are both amenable, within twenty four hours, we can set a special meeting. We can meet on Zoom with Rita and whoever if if we're not comfortable approving this now with no information. Yeah.
Yeah, um, I didn't hear anything about the food truck request.
Yeah, I didn't notice that either. That wasn't an email I got either.
I think what they're really trying to do is be able to start setting up November first.
So do you have any ideas? How long does a setup take? Do we need certain temperature range before? I mean, it it no.
They they could be running, making ice now, just because I know a person that does refrigeration. He's been starting a lot of rinks over the last two weeks.
Like, who pays electricity for this? Who pays electricity?
Electricity.
Okay.
So maybe I make the suggestion that we move to approve the rink and then ask them to come back about the food trucks.
Set up for the rink itself.
Yeah. So at least then they can get going on the setup of the rink, but like, we'd like to get more information about what's going on with the food trucks and everything else.
That's very fair.
Okay. All right. So um, could I get a motion to approve um, a request from the New Canaan Ice Rink to temporarily operate uh, the rink in Wavine Park for the twenty twenty five winter season?
Second.
It's unanimous. And then if, um, John, will you or do you want? Who's gonna, do you want me to reach out to them or? You can reach out. Just let them know. We we'd need them to come back about the food trucks. Okay, perfect.
So the way the rink operates, right, is supposed to be self sustaining, right? How much do does Public Works provide in kind help with this? I mean, are are is do they do it all themselves?
Virtually none. No, you give them a place to store the rink uh, in the off season.
Where do you store it?
Right now, Talman Hill in the upper lot. So um, it's it it was kind of coexisting with the the work that was being done on the pump station. So I don't think anyone actually noticed. So now there's what?
Now they do.
The uh, um, yeah, so it sits there and but we don't, we necessarily just provide behind the scene support for some like to pay bills and things of that nature. So myself, Christie, Anna. Um, that's it. But other than that, it's.
Power, Persian power.
On them, right?
Also, we we leveled the uh, surface up there where where the rink is, but other than that, it was that was minimal.
Right. We handled that during the repaving. So we were able to then reset the grade to make it much more palatable to put the rink there, but that didn't necessarily drive up the cost for us at all as far as repaving goes. So but no, yeah, it's pretty much self sustaining.
All right. Uh, moving on to the water pollution control facility.
So um, I'm sitting in for Nick. Nick would be here today, but it's his wife's birthday. So uh, he has to have the day off. So to celebrate with her. So we congratulate her on her birthday, wish her all the best. Um, so this first is a request to purchase lab equipment for from uh, USA Blue Book. The lab equipment was uh, purchased at the time that the facility was renovated, uh, reconstructed. It's twenty four years old. I asked Nick to do a comparison of Blue Book with other um, other vendors and almost in each instance. Blue Book was the low. I think there there was an analysis. There was this, there was a in your in your tablet.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem. So and then it was also the fact of instead of trying to set up separate vendors and then have to go back to four different people for our lab equipment, given the fact that in total, um, USA Blue Book was the low. We uh, we'd like to go. We have had excellent um, service from them and uh, we've been purchasing a lot of our lab equipment from them or or lab needs from them. So we'd like to go forward with this purchase of thirty two thousand eight, thirty four, forty six. For the uh, the purchase of the lab equipment, the money's available in our capital budget and I believe we had thirty five thousand dollars in capital budget for it.
Any other questions? To approve a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase lab equipment from USA Blue Book in the amount of thirty two thousand eight hundred thirty four dollars and forty six cents for testing purposes.
So.
Second, it's unanimous.
Thank you. So this next is a uh, replacement of the uh, of a vehicle for the water pollution control facility. Uh, it's a twenty twenty five Ford Explorer ST. It's replacing a twenty twelve Chevy Equinox with a hundred and five thousand miles on it. The purchase price is forty eight thousand eight eighty one. It is on a state contract, state bid twenty four PSX zero one one zero. Uh, we did not include a trade um, in this. We're looking to either sell it aftermarket, but the the trade right now is looking at about two thousand dollars. But when we get the vehicle, then we'll look to sell that um, and bring that to your attention at that.
Did you say the trade was two thousand dollars?
Approximately two thousand dollars is what they valued the vehicle at at present, right? So we didn't take the trade. So we'll see exactly if we can do something different. Um, but there's uh, fifty thousand dollars in the current capital budget for it and we'd like permission to go forward with this uh, with this purchase.
Tiger is selecting a the um, a larger SUV for this job. What exactly does this vehicle do?
This is this, this is the supervisor's vehicle. This is, this would be for Nick. Um, so it's daily travel since he's on call twenty four seven. And then it actually goes to job sites if there's emergencies, which so it'll carry materials and equipment. The the Equinox, you're right, was a little bit smaller. We probably should have went with a traverse for that, which would be similar to the the Explorer in that regard at the time that we had purchased the this. Um, so yes, it it does haul some some equipment and some um, materials to and from, uh, if there was an emergency to a to a site, uh, to our three pump stations and what have you.
Did we find that he didn't have enough room in the smaller?
At the time, it was a purchase by Jimmy Rogers and we had, you know, we had uh, and it was Nick was it was a little bit different setup than it is now. So that was the thought.
But I mean, he's had this vehicle. So.
Yeah, he he this, this was what was recommended by Nick and by our mechanics as being the vehicle replacement for it.
Part of it is that we have some redundancy. We have other explorers in the fleet that we.
We have some explorers on the on the PD side. Yes, we don't have any on uh, on the public work side or on the, you know, for us, we have a, at present, we have just a couple of Chevys and uh, and then the larger vehicles are either Chevy or Ford.
The ST moniker uh, that you have there, what does that stand for?
That I don't know. I'd have to to find that out for you.
Okay, I'm just wondering about the, you know, the different levels of of uh, use, like you, I'm sure he doesn't need like a police, basically a police type explorer, if there's anything that was.
No, it's not. It is. It is four wheel drive because we like them to have four wheel drive. It does have a setup for um, flashing lights, but we can't have the reds. We can only have the embers. But I can get to what the the ST is.
Okay. Yeah, because if if it's an eight versus a six, I mean, well, you know, maybe we can burn some, burn less gas. We did a six, who knows?
Right now, pack, what is this? You 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 know where to look. I don't.
Yeah, this I, this doesn't give me what I need.
It doesn't.
To have this for a decade, like the last car.
Yeah, actually, probably a little bit, you know, probably a decade, maybe a little bit longer. Nick's drive is shorter than Jim's was. Jim was coming in from Brookfield. So uh, Nick is lives in Norwalk. So I think it's a little bit of a shorter drive. So we'll be looking at it, yeah, a decade or so.
This is a personal, they they have a hundred percent use of this vehicle?
Yes, not a hundred percent use of the vehicle, a hundred percent use of the vehicle on town time and to get back and forth. But not a hundred percent. You know, once it goes home, it gets garaged.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, he has to have a vehicle of his own to use for personal use. This would be just from his house to here, since he's on call and then here.
Are there, are there um, hybrid options in this or electric options or this is just straight gas vehicle?
This is a straight gas vehicle.
When you have short distances, electric can work pretty conveniently.
Yeah, except it's an emergency vehicle and at the time we wouldn't have to have it down to charge. So that's one of our problems with that.
Unless it was a hybrid, yeah, so.
Unless it was a hybrid.
Yeah.
The longevity of those engines, though, you know, you you get ten, twelve years out of these and it's proven as, you know, the electrics, we still don't know how long they're going to last, but batteries, pretty good so far.
Pretty good so far. We'll see.
Manufacturers say eight years, but.
We'll see.
All right. Um, if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Task Afford in the amount of forty eight thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars for the purchase of a twenty twenty five Ford Explorer ST for use by the water pollution control facility.
So.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guide rails.
We went out to bid for uh, this. We we sent it to three specialty guide rail companies themselves. We received two bids back. Uh, one from Eagle Fence and Guide Rail and the other from P and C Fence Company. This is for the northern sections of the intersection of Gertie's Road and White Oak Shade. So as you come across the Merritt Parkway Bridge, uh, there's sets of guide rail. Um, it's metal beam rail, uh, galvanized metal beam rail. It's been there well over twenty five years this past its useful life. The um, the I'll I'll call it the north westerly corner. It's already been struck and damaged. That's the one that's been shown in your picture. That's got vehicular damage through it. Uh, and then the rest is is rusting through in areas. So we'd like to replace that with a Merritt Parkway guide rail.
Are this a wooden ones? Oh, nice. Yeah.
Well, since we consider it to be a gateway into town, um, one of the gateways into town, we try to um, utilize the Merritt Parkway guide rail uh, system. If it was an area that we felt was going to be struck by vehicles, quite often you'd go to a core ten, which is a rusted rail system. But in this area, it doesn't show, apart from this one strike, hasn't any other strikes on or any other damage. So Eagle came in at uh, at a low of a hundred and six thousand four seventeen fifty. P and C was at one thirty nine, six eighty. I added ten percent contingency only because I don't know if there's a soft shoulder that we require some deeper posts or if further length of rail, once we get out there and say we want to extend it by about ten feet. So I added a ten percent contingency at the time um, for a total of a hundred and sixteen, four seventeen fifty. Um, and the funds are currently available in the twenty four, twenty five guide rail capital budget.
You check, how many um, feet of guide guard rail are we?
How many feet? It's an excellent question.
Would it, would it?
Is that how they did it by?
Two seventy plus seventy five plus two eighty. Is that what it is?
The uh, the uh, you get two seventy, seventy five and two forty.
Yeah.
Yeah. So five, ten, five eighty five. They bid it by, yeah, I bid about on a unit price for length of guide rail plus the anchorages are different. So you've got a cost for a anchorage into the into the abutment itself and then an anchorage, a concrete end anchorage that uh, as it trails off and ends. So those are bid out separately as well. So we unit price out the mobilization, maintenance and protection of traffic. Those three items, the removal of those items, since the units have to be removed, the existing units have to be removed and properly disposed of. And then some traffic control were the items associated with the bid.
Yeah, because it's not just the square foot. We have to go to each each site that they do. This is different. I mean, you can have ravines that are like straight down or, you know, flat areas are easy to work. So that is interesting. It's more expensive than I would have thought, but.
Actually, we're we're doing a little bit better than than uh, what we had done in the past. So around about a hundred and twenty five dollars a foot were less than that. With these installations, so.
I mean, just talking about a layperson saying, okay, we've got two guide rails here. Um, here's what it looks like. How much it is? And the the answer would be huh.
Twenty five.
Twenty five, fifty. Yes, yeah.
What's the difference between this wood, which is obviously more attractive? So I'm not going to doubt, you know, but what's the difference in pricing between these wood guide rails?
Thirty percent higher.
So this would be a fifty thousand dollar.
Fifty, sixty. Yes, if I, if if we went with the, the, yeah, we haven't put in.
Longevity of the wood versus the metal.
Same timeframe, twenty years. Yeah.
And what is the um, if it gets struck? Cause this has been struck as we can see. If it gets struck. You know, is one stronger at dealing with?
They're both rated the same. The Merritt Parkway rail.
This one actually, if you strike it and go over, it goes into, I don't know into, I don't know if there's a rock there. This one actually, if you strike it and go over, it goes into, I don't know into, I don't know if there's a rock there or not, but that goes into the merit. So I just, if you're telling me I'm going to pay forty percent more for something, I want to make sure that it's, I mean, it's, it's not in, I'm like.
For the Merritt Parkway. So a- as is the galvanized metal beam rail, they're both rated by the Federal Highway Department for, for that. So it's not a, it's a steel backed metal rail is what it would rail. So it's got a, behind that entire wood rail is an entire length of steel. That gives it its rating, you know?
Okay, so the wood is, is cosmetic.
Yeah, it's significantly more expensive.
It's a, we haven't put in.
But it's a lot, forty grand. I mean, that's not an insignificant ask for.
I can, I can go, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm ballparking.
To get a real price on both. I, I mean, I agree with you. It is much more attractive.
It's, no, that's a fair.
It's much more attractive, but in an, when we're talking about waveney and needing more surveys and I'm like, there's metal there now, there's bed mail there for thirty years if.
And it's a question that I get from the residents in that area everywhere, every time of when it's going to be replaced and when are we going to put something much more attractive since it's directly in front of someone's house, two houses.
But it's always been directly in front of someone's house, yeah.
I don't disagree. I'm just, we haven't put, we haven't put galvanized metal beam rail in, in twenty plus years because of the reason, because it's.
Yeah.
Well, you forget how shiny that would be. These have worn, you know.
What about the rusted metal?
Rusted rail.
Why don't you look at that one? Because that's actually more attractive than the galvanized metal.
Oh, absolutely. I, 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 I couldn't sit here and tell you that I want to put the galvanized metal beam rail and we.
Yeah, maybe the, the, whatever you called it. What did you?
Called the core ten.
That was not a nice word for it. What is it called? What core ten?
Yeah.
Maybe look at the core ten because it's probably more, less expensive.
I'll ask, I'll ask them for prices on the core ten and see what the difference is between the two and then you can make.
That would be great.
And the, the, the length of these are, they're not any longer, right? I mean, what you're replacing what's there or that one that's, that we've looked at, that's around where the Parkway is, that seems like a very short run.
We're asking for about twenty five feet more. Yeah, so that as, as it stands, what you're looking at is about seventy five feet. We asked for a hundred.
Okay, yeah.
Tiger, have we installed the merit style?
Yes.
Ever as previously?
Yes, we have them on Dunning Road. We have uh, we have them in several locations. Yeah, so Dunning Road is one that I can tell you off the top of my head. It had two cable guide rail there prior. The two cable guide rail is no longer allowed, so we've been replacing that. And then uh, uh, Greenlee Road.
I'll, I'll drive by.
Give you another look. Yeah, Greenlee's on the corner just past the, as you come in off the west road and you bang a right, uh, right there. It's on the outside of the curve, but there's several locations in town where we have the uh, the new bridge on Ponus has all, has, has wood rail there. Strictly when we try to put in, when we put in a new bridge, we ask for the Merritt Parkway guide rail and then we ask for a uh, something less than a galvanized bridge rail. So either a painted bridge rail or something with a black color or brown color. So it makes it a little bit more state. Uh, we, we've been staying away from the galvanized rail. The, the last galvanized rail we put in was in nineteen ninety nine as part of a state project with the Danes Highway Bridge and the North Wilton Bridge, but those were state projects and uh.
Yeah, but in the rest, the rusted stuff I've seen, there's one in Chichester and Greenlee and stuff like that. Yeah. Let's go, we, we should all drive around and look and we should.
Yeah, so you think there's one in Chichester that I?
The, the galvanized. Not the galvanized, the rusted one.
That's was the, yeah.
Weather, look, whatever, sorry.
Okay, because I think I've seen that before. So Chichester has weather as the core ten.
In Greenlee.
That was, that's in an area that gets struck quite often that, that was a replacement. So that's why we went with the core ten in that location. So that those are the two materials that we use, either core ten or the wood rail. We try to stay away from the.
So yeah, we could just come back. So we're going to remove this and come back with a core ten.
Table it or whatever, yeah, you know, I'll come back.
We'll table it for next, next meeting.
Maybe you could price a gate at Gertie's there too while you're at it. Like a, just a gate that comes down in the morning, just.
For who?
Only from the Norwalk side?
Yes.
You're difficult.
Any complaints? Knock on wood. I, I, you know, to be honest with the uh, we did have uh, the state went in and did, just to give you an update, the state did change the timing on the Gertie's Road one twenty four light with our recommendations. They went to our recommendations. And when uh, Hardisty and Hannover went out there, they were noticing that there wasn't much of a uh, a backup and we were allowing, actually, this, there's always the law of unintended consequences. We were allowing so many cars through that now we were actually backing up the on-ramp of the merit all the way to the edge of South Avenue. Whereas you can imagine, you know, we're letting so much flow through that they actually can't merge, yeah, quickly enough to get onto the merit. So that whole ramp system is now backed up there. Can't do much about that, but we, we have to be concerned or cognizant of the fact that we don't want them to back up onto South Avenue and start to block the box on South Avenue. But they did take a look at that and we'll come back out and look again. But I haven't, you know, like I said, I haven't gotten any complaints recently about.
Definitely been better.
Issues, you know? And I think that the three-way stop sign is working quite well um, at present. So we'll be looking at hardscaping that soon. We're, we have to do some drainage improvements that the highway department will do and then we'll do some uh, then we'll hard scape that. But as of right now, it seems to be flowing quite well. Haven't received any complaints from the residents about it, other than the initial installation. They didn't like the white striping, but once they understood it was temporary, it's different, yeah.
You mean, people aren't calling up and thanking you? I can't imagine.
So while we get a win, so.
All right, uh, sixteen bulky wastes.
So this next is uh, in essence, it's a, we had several invoices that unfortunately weren't paid prior to the operating accounts closing for twenty four. So therefore, um, the proper protocol requires that the invoices be paid under a twenty five account and then be posted back to uh, the fiscal twenty four account. In order to do that, I have to get permission or approval to um, for these to be expended in the fiscal twenty five budget. So it's sixty five thousand one twenty four eighteen overall for wind waste, which is actually city carding for our bulky waste disposal. And at that point in time, um, finance department will pay them under twenty five and then make a journal entry back to twenty four. And there's money available in the twenty four accounts um, to cover this expenditure. So there's money in the twenty five to cover the initial and then the twenty four to make the journal entry back. So it's just unfortunate that we missed the um, we didn't pay these uh, in a timely manner and, and the, prior to uh, the close of twenty four.
Did we get charged additional costs because we paid?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't charge, we don't pay the late fees.
Okay.
Any more questions? All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to approve payment in the amount of sixty five thousand one hundred twenty four dollars and eighteen cents to wind waste pass invoices for bulky waste removal.
So.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Cheryl.
And yeah, Fred, why don't you come up? Jimmy, Lou?
Okay, so we are here today to ask to have Fred T N E Junior promoted to chief mechanic. He has worked for us for fourteen years. He has been a junior mechanic, mechanic one and mechanic two. He works well with others. Um, all the mechanics do very well down there. He interviewed very well and we would like to promote him today to chief mechanic.
Fred's first words when we asked him around the first uh, interview question was uh, why would you like this job? And his first words were, I love to work for the town. Basically, you can't really say much more. So uh, the uh, the overall thought is, I'll just give you a short story. He isn't, I don't, I don't want to put him on the spot, but during the storm that we just had, we had the fire department was running the generator about twenty four hours and we were worried about running out of fuel. So Bill called me, said he had a concern. I called Fred. He answered on the second ring and said, hey Tiger, what do you need? And this is after hours on a Saturday evening. Um, I told him what I needed and he explained that he needed uh, he needed one of the parks vehicles since the hose wasn't long enough. Uh, so I said, I'll call you right back. And I just got to give a shout out to Ryan because I called Ryan and he picked up on the second ring and said, hey Tiger, what do you need? And I said, yeah, I need you to meet Freddie with the truck. And uh, within about twenty minutes, I got two text messages, one from Fred, one from Ryan saying everything was done. So it's kind of one of those things, very nice to be able to, be able to call on people, but um, Fred, your dad will be very proud.
Thank you.
Fred's dad worked for the, the police department and, you know, unfortunately passed away in office. Uh, and his grandfather was the chief of police. So it's kind of a nice transition down from grandfather to your father to you. So.
What's the relation?
But it's, 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 you're, you're illustrating the reason why it's so important that we, we have local people working for the town. You know, we have a lot of folks, great people, you know, drive in from all over the place, but having boots on the ground, you know, is huge. To be able, in those emergency situations, to be able to call and say, Fred, we need you. And this is big, so love, love the idea. Love the promotion. And your dad was amazing. I mean, just worked with him for many, many years and uh, very bright guy, knew everything about. You could ask him any question about anything mechanical in town and he knew it, so we've, we've got some great genes.
Any other questions? Okay, um, should I get both of them or do in one at a time?
We'll do one at a time.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Director to promote Fred T N E the third to mechanic foreman at the Highway Department.
So move.
Enthusiastically second.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, thanks.
All right, Marcy.
Hey, Marcy, how are you?
Good morning.
Morning.
Marcy is with me today. We are asking to promote her to full time. Marcy has worked these past five months um, as an interim. She has worked to really get out of the office, meeting people, working with residents, um, working with individuals, providers. Um, she has also uh, unfortunately, we had had um, the suicide in town. She had worked very well through that um, with all of our providers and families. Um, she works well with the commission and we would love to see her promoted to full time.
Thank you. Any questions? I've been um, thrilled with Marcy's performance. Um, you know, you know, you've been great. Um, she's just rolled up her sleeves without a lot of um, guidance. Um, and just uh, taking it upon herself to learn what she needs to learn and is not afraid to ask a question when she doesn't know the answer, so.
And again, available on the weekends. Um, we call her and she picks right up, so, which is.
Speaking of, when, when there was the um, tragedy in town, it was a Saturday or Sunday morning and I, it was Cheryl, it was Marcy. It was like, and Dr. Lazzi.
Well, and like you said, it is nice to be, you know, I'm all of two miles away. So like, if there is something else.
Yes, and we're lucky to have her because Darian would like to have her back.
She came from there, so we're not giving her back.
No, I'm not going back.
Any other questions?
That's great, very exciting.
So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Director to appoint Marcela Ran as full-time Human Resources Director.
So move.
Sorry, Human Services Director. Sorry, I'm not giving you your job. Sorry, Human Services Director, thank you.
So move.
Enthusiastically second.
It's unanimous.
Everyone appreciate it.
Um.
There she is again.
Okay.
Blight Review Board.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So um, we need, we have two vacancies in the Blight Review Board. Um, and in order for uh, Brian to go and execute any of the Blight Review and issue any infractions, he needs a, he wants a full complement on the Blight Review Board. So um, I would like to recommend um, Marcy Ran being, so the, the vacancies that we have are actually vacancies of people who were specifically have to be from Human Services and Planning and zoning. So I needed to, so.
The ordinance reads.
The ordinance reads that way. So um, I would like to recommend Marcy Rand, Marcela Rand for um, the, as our Human Services rep and Chris Herring as our Planning and Zoning rep. Um, they're, they are three-year terms ending May first, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion to approve uh, those recommendations for the Blight Review Board?
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous.
And just, the Blight Review Board only convenes when necessary. And it's not like an ongoing commitment, which is good because these, both Marcy and Chris certainly have enough on their plates.
Right.
When they have to read, it's, it's a, it's an issue, so.
Yeah, but when they need them, they need them, right.
Exactly. So congratulations, more to do.
When you raise your hand, there you go.
Um, and then uh, we have um, a term that has expired. Michael Chen's term has expired and he has expected, expressed an interest in continuing his service on the Board of Finance and um, the chair is um, enthusiastic about his uh, continued membership on the Board of Finance. Um, so I would like to make a recommendation to reappoint Michael Chen for a four-year term ending November fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. And that's because his old term, just the, if the math doesn't work in your head, his, he had not been reappointed um, since twenty twenty three. His term ended in twenty.
Oh, and they just missed that.
Yeah, so you don't, they don't add it to when we're appointing.
He's been serving for free?
No, we haven't given those.
Those big bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is, this is a, yeah, I mean, hello with Michael Chen. I mean, and obviously you've worked with Michael, so. But it's a chance to thank, we're so lucky in town to have people that, at this caliber to serve on, in these positions. I mean, it's, Michael is an example of someone who just selflessly, he gives, wherever he is, he's zooming in from all over the place and he adds so much to that board, so.
Yeah, he was, I, I would say I just sat in on um, the last Board of Finance meeting where we had our um, OCIO provider, Russell Investments. And um, his, and, and Bob Hamels' perspective in that was really uh, great. One, it pushed Russell, um, and they had great answers to, you know, why we're doing X, Y, or Z, but they, they were the, the people asking the very um, uh, smart, detailed, smart question. So um, we're, we're lucky to have them.
All right.
So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve the following reappointment um, for Board of Finance for your term ending November fifteenth, twenty twenty seven, Michael Chen.
So move.
Second, it's unanimous. And then you have on your tablets, uh, there are contracts under ten thousand dollars. If you have any questions? Any questions?
Okay.
Lot of storm cleanup. Yeah. Luckily, we're keeping just.
A record.
We are keeping a record of it. Um, Russ is sort of the point person on it and um, is, you know, submitting that stuff to FEMA. And then um, you know, just as a, a side note, and it went, I think it went into the newsletter as well. We have until, any business owner um, or resident has until November nineteenth. I think it's the nineteenth, right, Tiger? I, I don't know, to the FEMA. Um, so if you have a, if you have a um, had damage during the eighteenth and nineteenth, you have until the nineteenth to submit your um, expenses to FEMA and the SBA. So um, just a, a reminder for anyone who didn't see it in other, and it's on our, it's all on our website. So if anybody needs more information, if they go into the emergency management um, section of the website, all the information about all those programs is, is linked there. Okay, and then overpayments, approval of refunds or tax overpayments? Okay. All right, so could I get a motion to approve a refund for tax, for tax overpayments?
So.
Okay, it's unanimous. And then, Rob, can you come up? So this is a, a, a new one for, for me.
The word suspense. I am in suspense.
Yes. I know, they're like, does she need to come? I'm like, yes, I don't know what this is.
What we want to do is the Tax Office would like to, your approval to suspends eight thousand four hundred and seventy three cents for the ground list of two thousand and sixteen, seven hundred and ninety one dollars and eight pennies of the supplemental of the ground list of sixteen and one thousand three hundred twenty one dollars and seven pennies of the ground list of twenty twenty for personal property. We're not going to stop collecting these. These are still with a collection agency. These are, have to be by state statute for fifteen years to continue to collect them. We just would like to take them off of current books and put them into the suspense books.
So suspense is just taxes we have not been able to.
Collect.
Collect them.
Yes, so it's a total of ten thousand dollars, five hundred.
It's just a funny word, suspense, you know?
Right.
All right, and so it's just, it's a journal entry so that um, it doesn't go into what you're currently due.
Correct.
Okay.
And if we get it, it's a bonus, yeah.
Collection agency works real hard at getting them.
Well, that was going to be, the question is, so two thousand sixteen, there, so we're, does this indicate that we're clear on personal property? And we just have motor vehicles outstanding. So, because this spans a, a pretty good length of time. So you only have.
We suspend personal property a lot quicker. It's the hardest to collect. Those usually anything that's on suspense on personal property, those are the ones that close in the middle of the night and we don't see that money anymore. Those are the businesses and how they treat their taxes.
Interesting.
So if, um, you're transferring ten thousand over, um, and we have a collection agency handling this, it, it, what would we get? Will we get a percentage of that back?
Yeah, we get the full amount. Whatever the cost is for the collection agency in order to collect this, statutorily, it's fifteen percent off the taxes. They get to keep that fifteen percent. We get full base and we get full interest.
Thank you. So is this, um, this is including interest or not including interest?
These are not including.
So then there would be extra money coming in for interest to us as well.
Correct.
Great. All right. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the tax collector to transfer uncollectible taxes to the suspense tax book for the following categories, um, twenty sixteen motor vehicles, eight thousand four hundred dollars and seventy three cents, two hundred fif, two thousand fifteen supplemental, seven hundred ninety one dollars and eight cents, twenty twenty personal property, one thousand three hundred twenty one dollars and seven cents for a total transfer of ten thousand five hundred twelve dollars and eighty eight cents.
So move.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then you have, um, legal fees on your tablets. Any? Questions? Concerns? Not if I could get a motion to approve, uh, the legal fees.
So move.
A second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And, um, I don't have any comments for today. Anybody have any comments they want to make? All right. And I get a motion to adjourn.
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.